Okay. Call this June seventeen twenty twenty five, meeting of the Heber Town Council of Order and that. What's it look like?
Seven thirty one.
Seven thirty one. Approximately two ten, joining the pledge, I pledge with the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justin Albright is not here, Mike Wallace. Alvarez.
Here.
Amy Greenwich is not here, I am here, John Spex, right, Gallo, present. Randy Decker, present. Little brother.
Brother.
Fred Lott, here. Joshua Wells, not here, Jamie.
Here.
Justin Albright extends his apologies, he had to work this evening. And Tammy has a medical issue that she is taking care of her family, Joshua Noel, Chief Noel is at training for hazers. There is no public hearing, so there is no signing in, public comment. The town council would like to let everyone know that the agenda firm is available online on the town website Friday before we. The last sentence is come and speak in topics before decisions made. This meeting is being recorded, will be made available on our website for our next meeting. In order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, get through today's with us, please state your name and address, or omitting your comments to three minutes. Comments will only be allowed during the public comment section of the meeting directly after this statement is read. Is there anybody in the public comment? In the public comment? Anyway, but the record show that it was called four or three times, we'll move through. The first thing we have in front of us, council, is approval of the town council minutes for, for May, as well as the workshop minutes. Is there a motion?
I will make motions for the three minutes.
There is a motion, is there a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all those opposed, motion passes to the group minutes. We're in. unanimous consent, we have resolutions and ordinances in front of us, so in order to be able to act on these. Brad, are there being all those three of us here, can we act on this? unanimous consent? I don't think so. Sweetheart, you have to, it's gotta be unanimous, yeah, but I mean, first of all. Right, we haven't had this issue yet, and this has come up. But the fact is. Here I go, I'm doing the breakout and thing. It's like a swamp, I'm arguing in my brain, because. People think you have this, but I mean, still, but I mean, there's a lot of parts, I think, of everybody here, tight arms, but yeah. Yeah. I think just to, this air is a caution. So then, for the ordinances and resolutions that are in front of us. And we need to take it, is that accurate? Thirty-two minutes. The ordinance for the storm water fee, this is the second reading, so there is no need for unanimous consent to that. Pull pause for a minute, I. Hold on a second. Sorry, what was you like on Russell?
Uh, I will go ahead and move on to set the second reading of the storm water, might get that one done.
So then we will have the table transfer resolution.
Couldn't we do the first reading now, then?
I was gonna say, yeah, then just do a first reading of it now, and then at the next hearing, then hold on a third.
There was still the next one.
Yeah.
I think if someone's absent the next month, it puts it off for two months.
True.
And that's not going to have the transfer resolution.
Alright, so Jamie, we're not gonna be able to act on, but we can do the reading. So we have twenty, uh, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six dash seventeen. It's a resolution for the transfer appropriations from the town Heber border county Indiana. Uh, this will be available online for people who was there, but you're transferring, where? The file from general line thirty-two twenty-four, general leasing gas thirty-five hundred, two. Line on thirty-four fifty-one, general police equipment thirty-five hundred, MVH. Line on twelve ninety-three, MVH, uh, icing then, was that the icing matters of two thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and seventy-six cents to line on fourteen ninety-two, MVH signs of the same amount. Uh, Brad, line item fourteen fifty-one from lit, right?
No.
Local in the past lit, uh, fourteen fifty-one lit, this latest equipment seven thousand to line on eighty-one thirteen lit, ET seasonal help, hard time seasonal help, the same amount. So let me know that that is first reading. And because we don't have enough people here for unanimous consent, I'll leave any motion to table.
I don't believe the table.
By this many motions, or a second?
A second.
There being a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Motion passed, it's three, it's a table. Honestly, Brad, I think just semantic wise, we probably wouldn't have to have a motion to table.
I was gonna say, David, I mean, it's, yeah, it's just a natural progression. That's what I was just thinking too about, there's no need to table it, since we're just gonna do another reading in it, I don't know, for, like you said, semantics. Uh, so, so reform, I think that we're okay, we don't need to table it. I mean.
But it just should have been, you know, it was the first reading and it wasn't officially active.
Abs- absolutely.
Jamie, can we reverse that? Or do we hope to talk this team, so it's more correct than the best? Because we're not tabling, we just did the first reading.
The first reading, yeah.
Okay.
Just correct here. First reading.
Give it to you, because if I do, shit, which pension. Alright, the next thing we have in front of us is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five dash twenty storm water fee increase. This is indeed the second reading, which allows, and even the board to act upon us. Now, it doesn't say here that I was able to see anywhere, but it may want to be marked on yours, Jamie. This was a two dollar increase, right?
Yes.
My actor is saying it doesn't say the description of what changed.
Uh, no, it does not.
Alright, so it's a two dollar increase across. And Randy, can you kind of go into why the storm water, wanting to do that, or what we might do with that two dollars?
Yeah, so, uh, twenty twenty-four and beginning of twenty twenty-five, we've kind of just prepared our. Um, with what we got, I would say, since I've been here, the drainage board has been super aggressive, and has accomplished a lot. Uh, in my, the CCMG, which is the whole seventy-five cents on the dollar grants, um, this is gonna allow them to, uh, hopefully after more drainage projects, obviously, we're doing, uh, this thing fast right now, and spent roughly three million dollars on paving and storm there. So it's gonna help out with that.
Sounds good, lots of things in town getting done, full infrastructure getting done, getting upgraded, so thank you. Alright, so this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five dash two zero, there is a establishment of a fee structure, the fee structure being added two dollars to everything. On it will replace the old, uh, fee structure in the, uh, town ordinances. Is there a?
So this is current charge that we have on this?
That's the new rates, that's the.
This is not an increase of this, this is one that the rates are moved to after the two dollars.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five dash zero.
Jamie, is there a way to, uh, make a note on this ordinance when you upload it? That this was a two dollar increase across the board, so people don't think that we increased nineteen thirty up in all of those.
I can probably do something like that. It just says monthly.
I know, but I, I understand, but this, the casual, the casual reader here may look at this and be increased this, these fees, this amount, as opposed to just increasing it two dollars. The ordinance itself doesn't say that.
This ordinance is a exact copy of the one that it's replaced. So.
I agree, I agree. So you can do that?
I can do something.
I apologize, did I call for a motion yet?
You did.
Let it be approved.
By him, and has there been a second?
I have a second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all those opposed. Ordinance twenty twenty-five is that dash zero five dash two zero is approved. Alright, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six dash seventeen, this is a budget ordinance. I have recommended to the council that this be tabled, there are some typos in it that I think we need to clarify.
Will they move into table?
There is a motion, is there a second?
I said that.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all those opposed, motion passed, it's three, it's tabled. Other ordinances in, uh, resolutions, full business, I don't think we have anything on here, new business. We have the HWC agreement, why do you want to kind of explain that, since it's been backed up from the planning commission?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, basically a list piece to. We have an engineering or any type of, um, issue that we need to have someone look over some documents, or, you know, if you submit engineering course, we can go to them. Uh, we already have a price established, a total cost per hour.
Randy, if you remember what the Westler threshold, that we authorized, gonna be able to do. Big five thousand. Does the council want to do the same thing for Brad?
I don't see so.
Uh, do we need to take those separately? Brad, to approve the contract and then the stipulations to allow Brad to, uh, just send the drug five out?
I guess, this isn't only for Brad, no, it's also for me as well, this is a lot of inspections. The reason I think this is slightly different, and I would like to see it up a little more, Brad's got his side, and I've got three things on my side. I've got storm, water, and sewer, so I feel like if we do five thousand, we might be talking every month. Uh, and maybe not, but. We all are calling on right now.
Right. It's just, well, and then you need to spot on this, this is all, this stuff is being, uh, paid for by the developer governance, and. We're just gonna have to make sure that we communicate clearly with you, who it is that's paying for what, for him, right? Yes. What's your thought there, Mr. Public Works, maybe, huh?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, separated them would probably be best, so that we each, they don't have to go to each other, maybe we spend five thousand yet this month.
So I'm gonna say this, you know, let's, let's, uh, let's take action on the, on the actual contract first, and then address that issue, sir.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve the HWC, and I was like, is there a motion on the HWC?
I would like to move into accept the HWF.
And I don't know if you said it or not, by, or if I just alluded to it, the planning commissions, this is before the planning commission had approved it, it's available, the recommendation.
This, this will, they will, uh, can be recommended, they just put the planning.
So why does that emotion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Well, Jamie, with the accounting of the situation that we were just explaining, how do you think it would work best for you to keep track of?
Uh, when HWC goes us, they can go us either billing or utilities.
But you'll have to keep track as well of the five thousand dollars that's went past, right?
Yes. And I don't know, these guys don't know if they're over five thousand.
Is there a motion?
I don't think you can, what is it?
Uh, I think the motion should be to set a five thousand dollar limit before coming to the council, um, for each the public works director in the building. That's right.
One each second?
Yes.
Well, will that reset once reversed? I'm just thinking out loud. Like, if they, if we pass it on, I might add a zero. Just asking.
I don't think so.
I know I'm unincorporated.
Because we didn't spend any money that way. My only thing is that if it gets in a dispute, we run up a big bill, well, I guess that that would be taken care of later.
Uh, well, I guess the question with Jamie is, is that, when a, when a bill from anyone comes to the, uh, to your office, you send it on to one of the contractors, do they notify you when it's paid?
Not if you have to.
So then how would we know that it's, uh?
We can ask that they notify us that this is the.
Let's, let's play this by you.
Okay.
So, is that reasonable?
I just don't remember, is there a, what Jason, a lot of projects, so.
I think I want to, you know, Jason's a great guy, I kinda wanna, I wanna see how this works out. I'm gonna make that motion.
You went to.
Did you get it? Well, I know.
Yes, I'm, I'm.
Alright, so I've made the motion. Is there a second? There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, motion passes. Alright, the next thing we have in front of us is the, uh, garbage contract. Jamie, wanna go into this?
Our garbage contract is up at the end of the month, and, um, Mr. Metros came in and talked to me. If we went out for new bids, the cost of garbage that we paid monthly could go up anywhere from ten to fourteen percent. In our current contract, it states that the increase can be no more than four point five percent, and that's what these are. And it increases each year.
Alright, so this is a three-year contract?
Yes.
And really, the increase, well, I can't, I can't, but it's, it's not, it's a bucket, right, each year?
Yeah, in twenty-six, it's ninety-nine cents, and in twenty-four, it's a dollar four.
Okay, cool. Is there a motion?
I only motion to accept the Republican service package for disposal.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, motion passed. The next thing we have is the milestone contract. What we got? Give it to us.
Okay, you have the contract for milestone for the CCMG, called on for twenty twenty-five. You signed and approved the notice of award and the bid ninety-six package last Tuesday. So this is the last thing you have to sign before we can, uh, ask for money.
Say your name, what is your name?
Uh, yeah, there's a, right, when we accept the contract, milestone, the results go over, Randy, it looks over, and things, putting on the oven up. I will make a motion to accept the contract.
And the numbers were on the approval from last, yeah, last, totally special, but Jamie said, from ninety-six and the notice of award. And this contract refers back to that.
Yes.
Alright, so my statement of motion, is there a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, motion passes. Alright, I don't think that we're having new business other than this, is there any other new business? We'll move on to reports of officers, ready?
Um, I did point out that my work is back online, we rebuilt that after the spring flooding. Uh, again, with some sea and trend, with the bottom seat, with the bolts, and the nuts, not away. Um, seems like every time that we flush now, we, we've got one more part. Uh, so currently, you have Lincoln Street, which is being replaced, um, in the next couple of weeks. And then, uh, Wilson Street, and one on Madison Street. The only one that I plan to change yet is the Madison Street, and we still would like to do that, and sure, it allows. The, uh, moving on to the signal project in Washington, uh, they're wrapping up concrete sidewalks. Uh, prep and leave the baby, baby's supposed to start Friday. So early next week, we can see that wrapped up. Uh, they started a new restoration today, and set the final grades, punch list will be next week. Um, they're starting a little bit with it over to the eastern, off of Norbe, which is Chicago. We should see the tree tremors, and they're, they're little people, and they're through some trees. Um, so this project's coming to a close, and then we'll start on the Chicago, July seventh, it's the plan. No, actually, sorry, it's at time, because they wanted to feel and up to Chicago through the alleyway. Um, for the Indiana, enter Chicago on July seventh, so that's, we're making progress there. Dollar general, uh, sewage is hooked up, water's hooked up, all the required test, back to pressure tests are all cleared. Uh, we will be turning Dollar General on the burnout, and, uh, so that's coming along. Working with, uh, Travis Lydon and Jason Spain, uh, manual practice, and David Streeter. They're gonna hook up to the water line, uh, possibly at the end of next week for the bowl part of the building, their goal is September first, for the new apartment building, and then the spring, they want to do it ahead of time. Um, so working through that, we still gotta do a couple of spot inspections, and I'm working with Tyler and Jason to, uh, get those corrected, though, should have one for next week or two.
So it's not my video, Jamie?
The video was by the, partially, apparently. Well, what I, what?
It's not, huh? It's not, it's partially?
Yeah, they got, they got the phase two done, they're doing the manual practices.
Uh, any problems with phase two?
I don't know, but I need to talk to Steve back to do the, they don't know, so. The spot checks are probably mounted up for the manual practices, I want to see the sewer connection, and I want to see the three water traps. And we'll get those scheduled.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, uh, traffic is terrible, park version, both sides, with both residents and contractors. I thought contractors were supposed to stay in one side as well, we had that conversation here. Is that something you can talk, Brad, to the site superintendent?
Yeah.
Can't get through it.
Yeah.
Um, and do we know when, I know you're extremely busy, those parts, huh?
I have asked the street department multiple times, I will ask to get the water line.
Okay, because it's.
No, I just need to do it.
They're not gonna be able to get a fire truck down?
No, I mean, personally, I know, and we, I'm there every day. Alright, and I will make sure that they put that, the, on their list tomorrow. They won't be done tomorrow, because they have to locate, but we'll at least get the locations, call in the sites pick, that way we can get done.
And Bob Holden, did he get back, confirm the hundred and ten E D Us?
So if you notice that letter, uh, John Wurdest come up one oh seven, Bob Holden was at one ten, but what we asked John Wurdest to do was consider the church. So I forwarded that email, because Bob Holden was out of town, I forwarded that email to, uh, Bob Holden, I was hoping that when we met Monday, we would finalize ours, I had Bob on standby to confirm everything. Uh, I don't want to send that out to all agreement, so when we're done, and everybody says this is what it is, and you know, that's gonna become a legal back matter. So best, we're, uh.
Uh, for us, Lucy, we're talking about the big wells down in one ten, total redness.
Right, and I, and I do think, talking to John, we asked him for the church, so maybe that's where it's never come. It doesn't say that in there, but that was announced, and what we asked him is this, so.
I want to hear that, and it'll be all agree, he used the reference for the, for the church.
He made that, he made that comment, and it, it wasn't much. It wasn't much, right, but he didn't say what it was, but again, I go to Bob to take a look at it, uh, and, and, and I do know that he looked at it, but, um, so whenever we get together to finalize that letter, uh, I will get Bob on, we will finalize everything.
It's three D U, E D Us except on Sunday.
Alright, Brad, we got a question.
Just, uh, two eleven North Wing, she's gonna have the rest of this week to, they have to. Man, I love her, she needs, so.
But she's making her own products.
Yeah.
She's putting it all up at the house.
Yeah.
Oh, but she did, but, but some of it there, so.
Yeah. I saw two U-bolts there, what?
Okay. Randy, if he, if this, if he decides to, what is for last night? Are you gonna be able to mobilize quickly, and I'll just get that out of there by the point of what?
We'll do, probably, but last possible, I was just gonna make a couple busy adventures, I'm kidding, and I, I adore it, because I don't know what I'm up against yet.
Sure.
Will she be going through the dumpsters?
Yeah, I'm probably.
If, uh, I will say, we are.
Uh.
If I have to bring the contract, we do that, yes, opportunity, and we will let that cost do it as well.
Yeah, so. Excellent, but I wish that that's a lot, it seems like she's put in a lot of effort, and I hope she was able to do without any of the power. Slender?
We're still working on trying to get, right, funding, even though we're to proceed. We have scheduled a public meeting for this Thursday at seven o'clock. Which was one of the requirements that we had for the Indiana Dunes Tourism Group that we got. Uh, for public input into what the town would like to see on the town. The funding is becoming a problem, because the Indiana Arts Commission that we had applied to was supposed to give their awards July first. We received notice that they're delaying the award because of federal money. Um, and the other one that we were going to apply for, the submission dates until September, so we're running into issues of getting things. But we are still proceeding, at some point, we may have to decide whether we're going to postpone this idea, because just money issues. But we're still working on it, that's it.
How much money are we looking for right now?
Well, the project's supposed to take approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Um, we have five of Indiana Dunes Tourism, which we also have to match. So.
Can another grant be used to match the five?
Yes, we get one.
Sure, glad to know, and that's comfortable.
Yeah, it, no, we can use another grant award to match that goal, but at this point, we don't know if we're gonna have it in time to do the project this year. We'll, that's something else we're gonna have to be talking about on Thursday night, as to whether or not we should keep going.
Hey?
No.
Alright, the chief of. Alright, the chief is not here because he's a train, anything, I don't believe there was anything significant that happened at the redevelopment meeting, or a representative. Here, but there were anything that happened with development? Not substance to the hardware.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to thank once again, um, Janet Danielle from the lottery, phenomenal event that happened here. Uh, and, uh, this was an event by the chamber, put together a lot of different groups to put this thing together, and, uh. Even felt alive and booming, wonderful, you know, between events like this, events like the, the partner, the partner puts up. Once it happens, makes design and through other men, whether they're inside or outside, makes it even a really nice place to be, you know, including all of our ladies and things like that. Alright. Any other town announcements?
Yeah, I'd like a walk of, uh, outlaw hobby that has come to town, and, uh, also Country Kitchen Pancake House. Both of which I have spent some, some, some money at, and enjoyed both immensely, today was, we've been cutting for the outlaw. Buffy House and Pancake House was a couple of, oh, a week or so ago.
Set over there, of that, I will second that, both places. I had excellent deals at the Country Kitchen, service is great, both, all of it's worked out, so. Uh, even is moving, like I always say, it's the next place for the B, and, uh, we're all working together to get there. Any other announcements? Alright, then I will move on to the, uh, the docket. This is our initial reading, total transfers and nets, everything will be available online. The total of two hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and forty-six cents. Transfers of a hundred five thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. And the net of a hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty points. Is there a motion to approve the docket?
Okay, go ahead. I'll make a motion, so.
Is there a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Three hundred. Well, that's our last meeting of the kitchen, the school game?
Yeah.
I did wanna go over again and say they asked some excellent questions, it was great to see that the school was involved, and hopefully, out of the group that came. They went back and told their friends, their juniors, we're gonna go next year, and maybe we'll have some, some people that volunteer in our boards, commissions, or run for office, so. Uh, from Mr. Erving, thank you, you're right. Is there anything else for the good to go up, uh, is there a motion to adjourn it?
Motion shake there.
There's a motion, is there a second? All in favor, uh, all those opposed, motion passes through, thank you, everybody. Thanks for sticking around, I'm excited.